You guys all ready? Mr. Eastman, you ready?
I'm ready. Seems like it might be a lot of them.
You guys ready over here? Mr. Sadie, you ready? Like to call the order, the Bucksport Town Council meeting for April 12th, 2018. Road call, please, Kathy.
Mark Eastman.
Here.
Paul Rabs.
Here.
David Keen.
Here.
David Keen.
Here.
Peter Stewart.
Here.
Paul Dawkins.
Here.
Robert Carmichael.
Here.
He had an previous presentation of a town council recognitions. We don't have any recognitions, but Mr. Campbell was supposed to be here to give an update on Wilson Hall. We got a message that he's tied up at legislature. He hopes to be here by 7:30. When he comes in, we'll go back to that item. So we're going to go on to item four, which is consider minutes of previous meetings. We have minutes for March 15th, 2018. We have a motion and second approve the minutes of March 15th, 2018. All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. We'll go to item five, receive and review correspondence and documents. First one being Down East Transportation Monthly Ridership. Susan?
Yes, we have actually A and B, the monthly ridership for February and March of 2018. Once again, I would note, for those of you who remember, we used to have one page with just a few on the taxi. If you look at the utilization of the services, that it's a huge increase. And this is a direct result of the work that the Senior Resource Committee and Leslie Rabs have done in getting the information out in the public for people to know how and when to access and use the service. So it's...
Wonderful.
It is.
Any questions? Okay, we'll go to item C, notification utility location permits on Route 15. Susan?
Yes, this is a utility location permit application that we're just being notified that Central Main Power is proposing installation in DOT's right of way of some pole replacements along Route 15. It shows where those are on a map, and then it shows where they are. But it's just a notification to us that it's being done.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, we'll go to item six, ordinances to be considered or introduced. Mr. Stewart? Do you have any? Okay, item seven, discussion items for managers clarification or direction or council discussion input on issues. First one being Finance Committee update from meeting of April 12th. Finance Committee.
We had a recreation request of a splash pool and plus pool repairs that we had talked about previous. Nick Tomosco and Peter Perry from the Y came and gave us a presentation. They came up with a proposal. The feeling of the committee was to have them go back and reevaluate, but it is also a feeling of the committee that it's an idea that needs to be looked at and to continue to be pursued. But they're going to come back with a revised estimate and a budget for us. And that was all we had. We had another item, but it was not heard.
The repair of the pool...
Right.
Has to be...
Has to be done. Yes, yeah, the repair is going to get done. And the number on that was 15,000 that we had authorized them to get that done. And if you can see a picture, that wouldn't be a issue to get that.
And that will come out of the Recreation and Reserve account?
Correct.
Recreation facilities.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Any questions on that? Okay, we'll go to item B, ordinance committee update.
Earlier, we met as a committee and had a couple of things on the agenda. We got to one of them. It was the state pool license exemption ordinance. The CEO had brought forth a proposed ordinance. There was a ton of discussion and the feeling of the committee and several other members that were present was we asked the CEO to go back and work with the ordinance that is provided by a group that has dealt with this and is working through state regulations to make this happen. So we will be addressing this hopefully at the next meeting to come up with something.
Okay. Item C, sewer committee update for 4/12/18.
We had a request for interest in fees abatement. And we, as a group, decided it wasn't in the interest of the town to grant that.
Okay, any questions? Okay, we'll go on to item D, 52 Main Street bid results. Susan?
The council had requested that we seek bids to see what kind of interest there was in the property next door. And so we put out a request for bids. And I put in a $15,000 minimum in the bid because in looking back over records as far as I could find, that number covered the expenditures that the town had made on that property as far back as I could find. And that if the town was thinking of divesting itself of it, it should at least cover the cost of what it had invested. There was a lot of interest in it that we received. One, two, three, four, five. Seven bids, the highest of which was $58,700 from Knox Masonry, which is a local business that is currently a home-based business, but is looking to have an office presence on Main Street. And they were the high bidder. This is an indication of what you wanted to know, which was sort of what kind of interest would there be, what kind of bids are there. But the first question is whether you have decided that you want, if you want to sell it or if you want to keep it for some other municipal reason. If not, there is a resolve later on in the agenda that to sell it to the highest bidder, that that is there.
Not that we pay any tax on it. What's the valuation on that, do you know?
I don't.
The property is valued at $75,000, $30,000 for the building, and $45,000 for the land.
Me? I've never been told I was quiet. Thank you.[588.11][588.11](Laughter).
Okay, so this is the information, and we're going to act on the resolve very shortly.
Where are they going to move to?
Next door.
Okay.
The issue came up because there are issues with the building, either unconfirmed in terms of what cause and effect are. But the question was whether or not the town wished to invest money to upgrade the building or to do those kind of things. And at the last meeting, the discussion was they had more interest in seeing if some other entity business might use that space on Main Street and do those repairs rather than the town expending the money to fix the building. It was also suggested that, you know, someone should tear it down. But there is clearly interest from a number of areas in keeping the building there and seeing a reuse with private investment to make it a Main Street business as opposed to a town-owned facility.
And I think I was one of the ones that asked the question because having seen the use of, you know, the Rosen Building with heart and soul and having a gathering place, I thought, you know, that was one of the things that interested me. But, you know, hearing the discussion and having a taxable entity, a business on Main Street, you know, it seemed, you know, I think that was, in my mind, the right way to go with this. Hopefully, we can get a long-term viable business down in this case.
Okay, we've got a few details. I'd like to open it up right now for any public input on this, but we'll also have public input when we get down to the resolve, which is coming up very soon. Does anybody have any input on the acceptance of the bid for the old town office? Yes, sir?
I agree with the gentleman over there. You know, it's taxable, and we took that on the tax rule instead of, you know, being a town with exemption taxes. And it is a local business, and isn't even a business that comes from out of town. It's a local business. They have a home business, and so they'd be, you know, want to be a member of the government staff to have a local business on Main Street and it would be taxed and on the tax rule.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Hello, Stephen St. Peter Jr. I'm pretty excited. I hope that if they do get this, that they made this a great business. I've heard of their great reputation. It's going to be a showroom. People will be interested in the products that they sell. And hey, it'd be a great, you know, addition to Main Street, so.
Thank you. John Paul?
Would it be like a retail business or is it an office for his business? Do we know or...
I believe it's an, he's looking for office space for his business, yes.
And I guess the other question, even though there were lower bids, were there any of the bids that would have been more retail?
Rich was the shower of the building.
I showed the building to 12 different prospective bidders. Some of them watched it twice. The majority of the use was for businesses, for their business office. A couple of people did mention a pub, but those were the people who did not bid on the building.
I was going to say, I was going to change my...[846.82][846.82](Laughter).
I believe Knox Masonry also sells like gas fireplaces and stuff like that. So they may have some displays in there for people to be able to go in and see what type of work they do to drum up future business for themselves.
And communication with the high bidders. There's a good place, there's a good plan in mind, but they wanted to finalize the purchase before getting into other details on that. Financing, the funding is in place to purchase and make the necessary improvements.
Okay, anybody else like to make a comment?
I just want to thank you guys for the 16 years that we occupied the building. That's really it. We're moving next door, so that's good. It's an easy move, although I am going to need help on April 22nd, and I'd love to see everybody there. Lube up a tote, carry it outside, wipe it off, put it inside. Thank you.
Thanks for your good work, Leslie.
Thanks.
We did share that on our website, that they're looking for volunteers to help them move on that 22nd.
Any other comments? If not, we're going to go on to item E, the town manager's evaluation. Last year, we opened it up to the public for comment evaluating our town manager prior to the council going into an executive session, probably at the next meeting for her yearly evaluation. So if anybody would like to make a comment about what you think her performance has been the last year or since she's been here in Bucksport, feel free to make a comment. I'll open it up to the floor. Any comments?
I think she's wonderful, and she's worked with us, and I am the local health officer, and she's my boss.[968.82][968.82](Laughter).
All $300 that we pay you a year.
She paid you to say that? Yes, ma'am.
Well, she's not my boss, but anytime I've seen her work, I have been just amazed. I have a tremendous response for what she's done in this community. Everyone I have heard speak about her, of course, and how to advertise the serious scene and how to... She's a tremendous housewife. And if we let her go, we're not...
Okay. Yes.
So I'm a Hampden resident, and she was the town manager in my town for several years. And I just wanted to let her know that there is an opening.[1015.82][1015.82](Laughter). They are for my town manager, and I would like to, you know, put that forward just for public information.
You can go away now. Yes, sir.
It's wonderful. It hasn't happened in the town of Bucksport.
Thank you.
It really is. We, you know, this, our last two commenters, as everybody knows, weren't exactly the best picks, but that's beside the point. But she's been doing good. Taxes are pretty level, and anytime you have a problem, she goes back to you. Either she talks to you like this, or she gets back to you. So she's excellent.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I didn't pay you that.[1056.82][1056.82](Laughter).
Okay. All right, well, thank you for your input, and we'll take that into consideration when we do her evaluation in executive session. Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to go on to item...
Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
Yeah, while we're still in the area of committees, just to give you one quick update. On Tuesday, April 10th, we had the Economic Development Committee meeting. Some highlights from that meeting that I chaired is an update on the Muscle Farm. They are finalizing their loan regarding Greenhead Lobster. They plan to be in front of the planning board in May coming up there. We were told that the Pauls have been, are they in now, Rich?
I'm trying to say I have not made it up to meet the requirements.
Okay, they're close to the Pauls being taken care of up there. Under new business, one of the key things that came up was a plan to replace, we voted unanimously on the committee regarding deteriorating cinder blocks on the walls out here on Main Street when you commit to the main intersection, goes in front of Mings and all that, they're deciding to let go. So it turns out these were installed by the DOT, but now the town is responsible for maintaining them. And I understand, we were to understand that Public Works Department has looked at a product called Red Rock, which is a prefab extended piece, some four feet long, that mounts in and don't have to be cemented and so forth. But the issue there is going to be the cost. And it's a, to get relief or a grant, there is, we have to come up with the, we're looking at a subcommittee to come up with a downtown revitalization, revitalization plan that would have to, that would go into the, oh, my mind just went blank.
DECD?
Yes. And so the, in order to get a grant, we, anyway, we have to form a subcommittee, and that revitalization plan cannot be over five years old in order to go for the grant money. So that's, but a vote was taken and to go forward to form a subcommittee, get going on the plan, and then hopefully get grant money to do the repairs out there. So, and also was brought up to us that the planning board, they too are looking at strategies to complete the comprehensive plan.
Comprehensive plan doesn't work for that grant. Okay. Do you have any price at all on what this redstone stuff is? I mean...
No, we were just told that it was pricey.
Okay, because, you know, some of it's really bad.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's almost like, you know, maybe some of the worst, we might have to light the bullet here and get something done on it.
We shared some of the photos of those. The salesman actually came up to Jay at the same time that I was proposing to have it on the agenda. If you've seen the new Bangor, where Bangor Savings Bank is having its new renovation up on water, that's, it's called Ready Rock. The website's www.redi, R-E-D-I hyphen rock, R-O-C-K dot com. Johnny Wardwell spoke to its ease. It's less strenuous for the contractors who are putting it in. I can't remember if he mentioned it was something that our public work guys could do themselves or not, but it becomes very...
Yeah, it's an interlocking product. You don't need any cement, and the product they use lasts longer than the blocks and cement and all that stuff that was done. But we were under the impression, Rich, the mayor's just said that he believes that you don't need the revitalization plan in place to apply for a grant.
Is the CD being...
No, no, no.
I asked if the comprehensive plan could be used for that. Because we just spent a lot of money doing the comprehensive plan.
Well, I agree.
They're two different surveys.
I agree. And the other question that came up, and we didn't have an answer to, because I guess Adap had, there's some document analysis that had just arrived that neither Rich or the town manager had had a chance to review yet. So whether that might influence going after the grant money.
But again, you know, it's one of the things people see when they come into town, crumbling blocks.
It's the first thing they see when they come into town, is that wall. And there's actually six sections of it. It actually begins right here at the Starving Cow stained glass, which is a smaller wall. Then you have a portion over by the Jake's property, the Mings property, up by the Buck Cemetery, across the road. I know where the sixth one is, but it's down on the walkway.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Thank you. You all set? Okay, we'll go on to item, item eight, which is agenda items. A being adopt resolve R. 2018-50 to approve the sale of 52 Main Street. We have a motion and a second to approve the sale of 52 Main Street. Anything further from the public? From the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes? Okay, item B, to adopt resolve R. 2018-51 to approve the sewer commitment for the period of January 1st, 2018 to March 31st, 2018, in the amount of $194,010.136. Any comments on this, Sue? How would the council like to proceed? We have a motion and a second to approve the resolve. Anything further from the public?
Where does this money go?
This, this is the monies that are used to operate the sewer treatment plant. But that's what the sewer, these are people's sewer bills. That's what that sewer's for.
It's collected from users. Any further from the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes? Okay, we're going on to item nine, resignations, appointments, assignments, and elections. Appointments committees report out recommendations.
We had seven candidates for two open planning board seats, one a two-year seat and one a five-year seat. The committee's recommendation was Jay DeRoz to fill the two-year, or it's not a two-year seat, but the remaining two years of the term, and Steve Bishop to fill the five-year term.
How would the council like to proceed? We have a motion and a second to approve the recommendations from the appointments committee. Anything further from the public? From the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes? Item 10, approval of quick claim discharge of deeds. First one being Kelly Murray, map 24, lot 23. You want to do these all at once?
These are all from the sale of tax-acquired properties, correct?
They are, except three of them are owners who redeemed them before the foreclosure occurred. But these are all related to properties that were in foreclosure.
Make a motion to approve all the quick claims as a group?
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve all the quick claims listed as a group. Anything further from the public? These are all tax liens that have been paid. Further from the council?
Have you had any conversations, Sue, with the other properties?
Well, I've got, when we get through this, I have another one that I would like you to consider.
Okay.
That came in afterwards. Nobody else had bid on the property, but we have an offer on it.
Anything further from the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes? Item 11, town manager's report, department heads.
You're going faster than I am. We have an offer on the, we didn't during the bidding receive any offers on the two lots on Duck Cove Road, but following that, I've had a number of emails from people, and we actually received an offer from a John Brown for $3,600 for those two, which clears the taxes that are owed on it. But has made that offer. The council wants to also sell that lot as well. I was going to do that in my manager's report, but that's where it is now, but...
Are we okay with using that as a process that if we have...
We went through a formal bid process, and these that are having nowhere, from contacting the butters and looking for...
Basically, those properties that are out there that were bid are still available to anybody?
That's right. That contacts us, but... Because the goal was, is always going to just clear the taxes and put them back in a state of...
Can you post those other properties again on the town site just to see, so maybe it'll stir some interest that somebody didn't notice them before or something?
How many others are there? If we go with this one, this bid, what's left?
The ones that are left are ones that I think will be, the only interest we're going to get is the butters, and one of them is a very complicated lease and home in St. Francis, and I'm not sure what's going to happen with that one, but these are all things. So, but there are not that many left other than the...
Other than a butters.
Other than a butters, no.
Make a motion to approve the other, what is the one?
Sale of...
Sale of Duck Cove properties.
Map seven, lot 26 and 25.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the sale of two lots that are tax-acquired properties on the Duck Cove Road. Anything further from the public? From the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes? All set? Okay. Now we'll go on to item 11, manager's report from department heads.
Okay, you have in your packet reports from department heads. You don't have a written report from me, but I'm going to give a report on some things that I'm working on, we're working on. that I'm working on, we're working on. I had a meeting here yesterday afternoon with parties that either utilize or provide transportation services to people in Bucksport in some fashion. CARE, Down East Transportation, the Senior Resource Committee, Washington Hancock Community Agency. We had twenty different entities that showed up to talk about the fact that there is a grant opportunity available that has a fairly quick timeline of May fourth, I believe, that, and the purpose of the grant is to create a comprehensive transportation plan for the community that addresses transportation needs of people of all abilities, so that it, it, and the requirements of the application are that, that a steering committee of interests of affected parties, participants, be part of this process. I have to tell you, from my perspective, yesterday afternoon's meeting was pretty amazing. We had very interested people, all who in some way get people from one place to another for a number of purposes, who didn't, it's a patchwork, a quilt that's not sewed together. And so, they were learning yesterday afternoon about how they could help each other, and I think that this grant could create the plan that could, could make that available for everything. And so, that's a grant application that unless the council has an objection, that it's my intent to have the town act as the lead on the grant is thirty-five thousand dollars. It's a quick process. It, the grant is decided by June, and the work has to be completed by the end of December. But if the level of interest and excitement about this yesterday afternoon is any indication, I think that, that we found a need that could be addressed through this grant, that would help the entire area in looking at the public transportation piece that involves getting people and everything to appointments, to just the grocery store. So, that was a, a good meeting. I also, on April fifth, I told you that I had submitted a letter of intent to the Northern Border Region Commission for an infrastructure grant, and that, that infrastructure grant is related to improvements at the waterfront. The grant itself is due by mid-May. It'll be discussions prior to that to finalize what goes in as a course of that. But I wanted to clarify that the, that letter of intent had to be in by March thirtieth, and there were no council meetings between the time I got the information on the grant and then. And so, it seemed in the best interest of the community to preserve our right to apply by sending in a letter of intent rather than to let that go by because I hadn't asked permission. So, that's where that stands, and we'll have more discussion about that. I was pleased to have a preview of the Friars on Monday night. That was a nice, it's a, I think it's going to be a great addition to the community. I want to remind people that the robotics team is at the New England Regionals, and the last thing I saw, they won their first engagement. I don't know what they call them, but they won the first one, and were in a combination with two other teams. So, they're doing very well. Polakie has notified us that, that the Wednesday on Main schedule is set for this summer already. Have some new sponsors and a whole bunch of really interesting things that are going to happen then. I told you last time that Marina and Docks will be going in the first week in May, and we'll be moving forward with those items, and I think that's, at the moment.
Any questions on any of those items?
In the, in the department head report, it says that they still have some more of the alarms to do, even though that grant has run out. Do we have any idea how many they have actually distributed to the community?
I, I think, I, Rich, we'll get you that number in just one minute. Hold on.
I think that came around in postcards to me, but I don't remember the exact number, but I know it was a pretty pale way.
Chief Alman is here. He can-
Before he answers, I'm getting emails from citizens at home who are trying to watch this, who cannot hear from anyone in the audience.
We'll have to have people come up to the podium.
What did we?
How many, how many percentage are, are fire, smoke detectors that you put out?
Original order was six thousand total. We installed about forty-five hundred of those. We have three or four hundred homes that haven't recontacted us for another visit. What we're going to do here-
I'm one of them.
What we're going to do is take that list, and we're just going to deliver them to a drop-off of the fire prevention education material with a note in there explaining if they need help installing, give us a call. We did have about a four or five percent refusal rate, either they had full systems or whatever in the houses already. Ninety-nine percent of the people, more than that, were very pleased with the, with the program and the thought of it. We did have sixty-five thousand or so in excess funds. FEMA approved us expanding the program into our mutual aid communities. So, we've got those ordered, and they'll be delivered, probably like a thousand units to Orland, Porington, Prospect, Dedham, Penobscot area.
You're not installing those.
No, no. And Home Depot will be delivering them wherever they want them delivered. Now, we, there'll be no additional installations, except people that need them. Also use some of that excess funds for address signage, and those have been ordered. So, every residential address, Bucksport and Verona, will be getting two of those to put on their mailboxes or posts or whatever. We also ordered hundred block markers, red and black, I think, to put on signposts going out along their roads, so that you know if you're looking for nine hundred and eighty, you know when you get to six hundred, seven hundred, eight hundred, and that will be from either direction as well. So, people have a better idea of where they are on the road, no matter which way they're coming from. And all of the long roads will have those on there.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to go back to item three, presentation. Mr. Campbell has been released by the governor, I guess, and he's here to speak. Mr. Campbell?
I don't know if the governor has what's control over us. But while we're talking about the governor, oh, my name's Dick Campbell. I represent District one thirty, which is Bucksport. I do have a, sort of a brief on the marijuana bill. My approach, and give you a copy of it.
Yeah, sure, certainly.
In terms of that, I think a couple of the highlights is that it's, there's an opt-in for the towns to have sales. So, different than an opt-out, you get a chance to choose whether or not it actually happens. Social clubs are out. There's a lot of work that's been done over the last two years on this pretty extensive referendum bill. And so, there's a lot of debate, especially in my caucus, how are we in favor of marijuana or are we not? But in fact, it could more boils down to, are we in favor of adjusting a bad, poorly-written bill passed through the referendum process? Or do we try and make some sense of it? And I think I was at a state Sheriff's Association meeting. They said it pretty much best. You need to do something, or we're right into the wild, wild west. So, I think probably what will happen is this, this bill that's come out of the committee, and the seventeen-member committee versus a thirteen-member committee worked really hard on it for a long time, came close before sign and die in the last regular session, but just didn't make it. Worked on it. It's the best it can be, I think. So, the two big issues are expansion of Medicaid and tax conformity with federal government. And I think that's going to be the battlegrounds for everything.
This hasn't been adopted yet.
It's in the process. And then it goes to the governor, so we don't know what's going to happen there. He's really not excited about marijuana. But given the options, I think this, this has to happen. So, my guess, it'll be an override. So, I'm sorry, anything else on, on this issue that I can?
Bucksport already made, the council already made the decision to, to exercise its rights under the original law to prohibit the, the, those things that were within its right to do so. And there's nothing in this, I understand, that forces a reconsideration of that?
No. And those who didn't, those towns who didn't do anything, they have to opt-in to sell. So, you know, what you've done is not effective at all. That's how I understand it, but I'm-
Oh, that, that's my understanding. I'm just clarifying that we've already gone through that.
Do you have any numbers throughout Maine, out of all the municipalities? How many opted out?
I don't.
Any kind of a percentage? It was just on the news the other night that in Massachusetts, they have three hundred and fifty-one municipalities and one hundred and eighty-nine opted out from any kind of involvement in the town. Then the other question I have is on the tax structure. It says a sales tax rate of ten percent. Is that a special tax, or is that, you know, like we normally pay a, in other words, is a regular sales tax on top of this? Twenty-three percent, or is it inclusive?
I'm not sure, but I think it's on top of.
Okay. So, they'd be really looking at twenty-eight point something percent?
It's hefty. The original bill, I think, had ten.
Well, we, we found last year while we were looking at this, that states out west are in the, anywhere from twenty-five to almost forty percent range.
Yes, this is the lowest.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I guess the big debate over the time between now and sign and die are those two issues, expansion and tax conformity. And things don't seem to be moving very rapidly down there, so it's now time to play the procedural games. Supposed to be Elwin's day. So, anything else from that perspective that I can help with, I'll get back to you on? So, I'm here on Wilson Hall, and we've had an interesting run at it. We, as our, I came to you with an update prior to the plans. We had some advice to do more than the twenty-four that we were able to fit in the building. So, it was a redesign, and we came up to thirty-nine. We added additional fifteen residence spaces in an additional building. And since, with the help of your Economic Development Director, we've been talking to two providers, one statewide, another more local regional. And they're a little bit in conflict. One mentions that sixteen is the max, which would fit in the original building, and then the other is thirty-nine. But we really haven't gotten to a point where we can, we can decide to pull the trigger. And I don't know what the date of our option was, but I'm assuming it's right around here somewhere. So, I guess we do believe that now that we've got providers involved, they, it seems to have some real direction. It's almost the easy piece was the development piece and the funding with the tax credits. The building is not something we've not tackled. We've, we've got the inside of buildings just like this. As I mentioned some time ago, an azadine factory down Mass Harbor, we took the whole skeleton, of the inside skeleton of the building out, put a new diaphragm in, so it, it doesn't bother us to see the damage that's occurred down through that middle section of the building. And I'm actually quite excited about it now because we've got some interest from these providers. But we are at the end, so it's, we leave it to the pleasure of council, whether or not to extend us the, the three months, and leave it to your, your pleasure.
I, I think in the original conversations we had, there was a extension period.
I think we had two threes.
Two three-month extension periods. And I, I think now that you seem to have some provider interest, that, you know, I think it would be a shame if we stopped now. I would recommend, let's go with another three-month extension on that. Well, I'm just, I'm throwing that out.
I'll make the motion. Sorry, no, you could. I'll make the motion for an extension. That's second.
We have a, a motion and a second to extend the agreement with Richard Campbell on Wilson Hall to provide senior housing. Anything further from the public? From the council? All those in favor? Opposed? I guess the motion passes.
Thank you. Again, we'll be in to update every month, and let you know what we're doing.
All right.
Thank you.
Good luck.
In both places.
Okay, item twelve, is set public hearings or hold public hearings and approve of any licenses or permits? We don't have any public? No, we don't have any public hearing.
License.
Are they both? Oh, yeah, okay, they're both public hearings, aren't they? Okay. Okay, the first one being Wayne Hand doing business at Bucksport Golf Club for food service license and hold a public hearing for liquor license and special amusement. We'll clear the public hearing open. Any comments? If not, declare the public hearing closed. How would the council like to proceed? We have a motion and a second to approve the license for food service, is also liquor license and special amusement for Wayne Hand doing business at Bucksport Golf Club. All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Item two is license for food service license and liquor license for Glenn Redman doing business at Glenn's Place. Clear the public hearing open? Any comments from the public? Jeff, we're all set as far as the, of permitting them out? Because there was some issues-
You said you were going to prove it pending.
Right, yeah, yeah. Do you have any comment on that, or?
No, I think we found a solution to the sewer issue, and that's why I'm recommending that you go ahead and approve the liquor license application, keep that moving along, and then issue a conditional approval on the food license and special amusement permit subject to completion of the sewer tie-in.
Would that all be subject to what we're passing tonight? That condition?
My recommendation is to issue a conditional approval for a food license and a special amusement permit, and issue a blank approval for the liquor license application. And the conditional approval would be subject to the installation of a public sewer connection. We were there today with an engineer hired by Mr. Redman to evaluate the current system. I, I thought it was failing, and turns out my suspicion was correct. The cost of replacing that field is anywhere around thirty thousand dollars versus the cost of tying in the town sewers, around eight thousand dollars. So, both Mr. Redman and the property owner- So, both Mr. Redman and the property owner agreed that would be the better route to take, and that's what we're expecting to happen.
Man, guy, could you give us a brief overview of what your plans are out there?
Well...
If you don't mind coming up here, because I can't hear you over the TV lamp. I, I, you see a lot of work going on here, and people always ask what's going on, so I figured, you're here, why not ask?
Well, we renovated the whole building, the whole inside's been renovated. We moved the bar part of it, so we made a pub. So, it is going to be a seafood steak and that type of a restaurant that we're going to be doing. So, it's going to be more of a family restaurant. Yeah.
How many, how many seats do you think?
Hundred.
Hundred? Is that restaurant and bar?
That's including the pub.
Nice.
Yeah.
And everything, everything here gets fixed and everything, you're thinking early summer, hopefully?
I'm hoping by the middle of May. If we can get all the licenses taken care of, approved by the state, then we should be able to open right up.
Great.
Yeah, because renovation's almost done. It's almost completed.
That's great. Thank you.
Do you have any memorabilia out there from when it was Priscilla's?
Pardon me?
Do you have any memorabilia out there?
I do.
Okay, the public, it's a public hearing, any comment from the public?
I wanted to raise a, a certain thing. Will you be able to pave the driveway?
The driveway's one inch thick, yeah.
Okay.
Any other comments from the public? Okay, I'm going to declare the public hearing closed. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved. Second.
We have motion and a second, approve the food service license and liquor license and special amusement for Glenn Redman doing business at Glenn's Place. All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Okay, item thirteen is discussion items not on the agenda for the council and the public. We'll open it up to the public first. Any discussion items from the public? Any discussion items from the council? Okay, we'll go on to item fourteen, upcoming public hearings with designation of topics for committee assignments and scheduling of committee meetings. We have one scheduled, an ordinance committee meeting, scheduled fees. Peter?
We have, is this going in, I'm asking, I'm deferring to Jeff on this to make sure that we don't miss some of the other stuff that we didn't get to tonight, that, do we need to get work on that first?
In terms of priority?
Yeah, yeah.
No, I can proceed with the original plan for the food license.
That and chapter thirteen doesn't have anything to do with this, the fees, correct? Because that's just property maintenance, so there's no...
Well, I've asked for the schedule of fees to come back before the ordinance committee, so that we can wrap that review up and get that adopted, because it's important, because the...
Because we got the...
Chapter five change, the building ordinance currently has fees in it, that we're taking those fees out.
Yeah.
So, we couldn't have a scheduled fee in place when we adopt that.
I don't think, and I don't think Nick will be back by the next meeting, so let's just schedule this one.
Jeff had asked today, we, we had scheduled, this meeting was an hour, and it got eaten up by primarily one topic. If there was a way to have a longer period of time, what, what were you thinking of, Jeff, in terms of how much time you wanted to...
Well, there are other things too that I need to get to the committee, including a change to our subdivision ordinance that's needed to reflect a change that was made in state law. And that change, that change in state law also affects our land use ordinance, so those are two ordinance that need to be updated fairly soon.
Hang on one second, let me just check my calendar, there are things to come here. Because what I was thinking was, I mean, I don't have a problem if the rest of the board doesn't. We have, at six o'clock next week, we have a...
Yes.
Budget meeting, correct?
That's correct.
So, if we wanted to tackle something at five next Thursday before the, before you ...
The budget meeting, you mean have a, a meeting there and then schedule another meeting?
I can get twenty-six off.
For the following meeting, which is the next council meeting on the twenty-sixth. There are no other, if there are no others, you could, if you did an hour before next week and, and did five to seven before the following one, that would be a...
Can you do next week, next Thursday, Ron?
It's two, um, next Thursday, the nineteenth.
If we came in at five to do an ordinance, just to get it started, and then, and then we have budget at six, and then the following week when we have regular council, if we start having ordinance at five again?
I'll be out, I'll be out on the twenty-sixth.
You'll be here on the twenty-sixth?
I will.
Okay. But let's, let's do that, then let's...
That would, that would...
Twenty-sixth?
That'll give...
We'll go the next week at five.
That would give three hours, and we should, is a start on the... Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
So that everybody at five, nineteen.
All right.
So, your ordinance is the ordinance.
We're going to go to item fifteen, budget review, and basically we're going to go with community agencies first.
Oh, I gotta, I gotta, we gotta go back. I thought we were talking finance, we were talking ordinance. David, are you going to be here?
Yeah.
Never mind, it won't set still. You're, you're on that committee, David, next week at five.
You're going to be here?
I'm sorry.
I think so, yeah.
I'm just going to put this up so people can see the list.
So, you would, David, you would be here next Thursday?
I think so. Yeah, I'll talk to you after maybe.
I can fill in. Is it places to silence?
I guess so.
We're supposed to have two signatures?
I asked.
Tell them.
Why don't we sign two?
We just signed two.
Signed the other two already.
Special amusement, and that is for the liquor license.
I didn't listen to her directions.
I'm not thinking... I'm not blaming on Dave, he's came, they came this way, so...
I don't know if going started with the first. So, the one we're looking at, someone else said Washington County CAP.
What's that?
We want the one that said Washington County CAP.
Is that the first one on the, I'm not quite sure yet.
Two there, Simon. That's one that has utilities.
Yeah, I think it's still...
Did you turn this thing upside down anyway?
So, you gotta hit the print button. Yeah? Hit that. Cancel.
Yeah, I didn't have rotate for it.
Hit cancel. Yep. And now, well, we got the rotate button over there.
Yeah? Wow. I learn something new every time I get on.
Okay, ta-da, got the list.
You ready?
I'm ready.
Okay, here we go with community agencies, first one being Buck Memorial Library.
Nope. Washington Hancock.
Social agencies.
We're going social agencies first. That's not the way it is on the agenda. Sheesh.
I'm sorry, my apologies, we're out of order, but that's the one that's up, can we just...
All right.
Now, I gotta read you five minutes.
Yeah, I gotta, I gotta thumb through these now.
You work so hard to get those in order.
No, after I'm back, I got them this way.
Right there, that, it's there, it's from there back, it's this group right here.
Okay. Okay. We're going to go social agencies first. Washington Hancock County CAP. And they're requesting twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and sixty-six dollars. We gave them fifteen hundred last year. Is there anybody here from Washington County? CAP?
We're going to give them the fifteen hundred that we gave them last year, right?
That's what you'd like.
No, we're not.
We're not, I, I don't believe we're acting on it tonight.
Oh, we're not, okay.
These are just presentations tonight, so if you want to circle that in your... Okay, next one being child and family opportunities. Bucksport Community Concerns.
You got some here, Ben.
Last year, we, you requested forty-five hundred?
Yeah.
And you got forty-five hundred from us?
Yes, I did.
And that's what you're requesting this year?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Go ahead.
We had a hundred and eighty Bucksport families last year, and I think she sent you the breakdown of how many meals and all that stuff. And then at Christmas time, we had a hundred and twenty-one Bucksport families, two hundred and eighty-five individuals, and we provided toys and all that stuff for a hundred and twenty-nine Bucksport children. And we've got some great support in this community because it's going terrific.
Yeah, your, your services are food pantry coats for kids and adults, fuel assistance, Christmases for kids, Christmas and Easter basket, baby layettes, backpacks and school supplies, Thanksgiving turkeys, communities, food program for seniors.
Okay, we do an Easter breakfast, we don't do an Easter basket, I don't know how that got on the list.
I was thinking, I wrote, read it, no, it says baskets, but should have said breakfast.
That's what she told me too, and I go, we don't do Easter baskets, we do, I mean, Easter breakfast for all our families that come in.
That's here, that Bucksport contributes forty-five hundred, Orland twenty-five hundred, and Verona three hundred, so there is participation from the other communities as well.
Yeah, but we only have like thirty-eight Orland families, and I think we have nine or ten off the road.
Thank you for what you do.
No problem.
Any questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Next one being Down East Transportation. Anybody from Down East Transportation? They're requesting the same from last year, thirty-five ninety-two.
Yes, their application actually says twenty-six ninety-two, but if you remember correctly, there was a nine hundred dollar transposition error that they made, and they made the same one when they sent it in this year, but I called and the actual number's thirty-five ninety-two that they're requesting that...
Which we've given them the year before.
Which you've given them for a number of years, and this is the weekly bus and...
Right, yeah.
Share of taxi.
Okay, Eastern Agency on Aging, requesting twenty-five hundred. Last year, I believe we gave them fifteen hundred. Nobody here from Eastern Agency on Aging? Okay, Child Care Center? They asked for two thousand last year, and they're asking for two thousand this year?
I think we have for twenty years. I don't know, I think that's how many times I've stood here asking for it.
And you're still in the same building too, aren't you?
Yes, and I think that I will, when I retire and however many years, we'll still be in that building. So, just to give an update on that, because that's what everybody tends to ask about, we've completely kind of foregone plans for anything bigger and better, and have started putting money into the facility that we're in. We've updated some of the doors, we put a new roof on this year. We're currently getting bids to redo the flooring throughout the building, so we won't be expanding. We had looked forward to having a new building, but it's just not in the cards. So, we continue to have a waiting list though, as do other programs in the community. There have been a couple of new programs open up, which is good, so parents can have a choice about where they send their children. But as of today, we have sixty-three kids on our waiting lists that are either in another program and waiting to get into ours, or, you know, they could very happy, be happy in the new program that they found while they're waiting, but it does show that there's a need in the community for more childcare. We're going to keep doing what we're doing.
You have sixty-three on your waiting list, how many do you have there?
We have, right, today I have sixty-five.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you for your continued support.
Bucksport Healthy Community Coalition.
I've asked for more in our budget this year, of course, everything is going up, needless to say, but we are, our planning director resigned as of March second, so we're going to stay as bucks. And I'm looking for the funds to keep us going, to keep an office going, supplies and someone to... That's my request this year. Do you have any questions?
You requested fifteen thousand last year? I don't see any expense.
It hasn't been paid yet.
Okay, all right. Requesting twenty thousand this year. I think I talked to you about this, Val.
Yeah.
That you, you've hired somebody recently, like a consultant, to see where you, when will you have a result from that?
Mr. Keller, he's talking about the consultant, help us look at our...
Yes, yes, our consultant gives an eight thousand dollar investment out of her pocket at this moment, and again, that'll be a pretty expensive situation if our Mina extension isn't granted, because if it is granted, that will cover that.
Got it.
And we don't really see the results of that for another few months.
Got it.
So, it's a process. It isn't a one-shot.
Okay.
But we've started negotiations, so...
Okay.
We're looking forward to positive results.
All right.
I'm impressed with your write-up too, that, that's in depth, and that really helps us out a lot, so I appreciate the, the amount of effort that you put in for that, for the application, because that does, that does hold a long wait, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Senior Citizens Group.
Hi, I'm Sue Ann Craig, I'm the director, and first of all, I'd like to thank you for the support that you've given the Senior Center over the years, and in this past year, I really appreciate it. We're requesting five thousand, five hundred, because that's the amount that enabled us to pay our monthly bills last year. And I have brought menus for everyone, so that you can come and join us for lunch. Glenn Redman prepares wonderful lunches, he's the one who's opening a restaurant also, and I told him he's going to have a hard time, he's going to be competing with himself because we have five-dollar meals at the Senior Center, and I have more menus, I'll put somewhere for people to take on their way out. And when you come visit our Senior Center, you'll see that we have a new look. Stanford Management has put in new carpeting in the living room and new flooring in the dining room, and the next item on the agenda that I'd like to have them do will paint our entryway. And it's a very welcoming place, we find a lot of people enjoy it, and I, I think that the Senior Center is a place that the town can be very proud of, that you provide that for our seniors.
Did the new look bring a pool table back?
No. So, I'm sorry about that.
I thought you had gold eight, come on now.
During this year, you did add three thousand dollars to their appropriation.
That was going to be my next question, this includes that money that we...
Yes, yeah, I probably should have been specific about that, but I've tried to gloss it over.
Have you seen more participation by citizens?
I, what I see is pretty steady participation, and it varies according to the weather, or how people are feeling health-wise, and, but I, I think we've had steady participation, which I think is really good when you look at our population, because we have an elderly population that's moving along as far as their capabilities.
You see it picking up as people come back possibly from down summer?
Yes, yeah, yeah, we'll have the snowbirds, we'll be back. And we also get the campers from what is now that KOA campground. They can, we get the menus out there and they come for meals, activities, so.
Any other questions?
Happy place to be.
Thank you for your... Any other questions? Thank you for your job.
Thank you very much.
You didn't tell them that your home delivery numbers are up. Oh.
Val, why don't you come on and tell us all about it?
I was trying to make it short.
That's what Joe delivers.
Oh, that's right. He does. He does a wonderful job. Here's some menus for everyone. Our equal menus. I'll just leave them right there. Thank you.
Yeah, I heard Joe was out doing deliveries, and he's quite the charmer out there, from what I understand. So, yeah.
A long time since he retired.
Down East Health Services. Yesterday's Children. Hospice of Hancock County.
I represent hospice volunteers of Hancock County. So there's two programs, and we are the volunteers, okay? And we're requesting the same amount as last year. We serve bereavement support group, patient caregivers, community education, even song singers. You can have singers come to your home. It's really wonderful. Equipment sharing. We have durable medical equipment, which is getting harder and harder now to buy. And we have, we give it out free. And caregivers, we also have added Alzheimer's and relatively new program, the veterans. We do a lot now for veterans. And we have, one of our volunteers is a veteran, and he's made a big difference for the patients, really. He goes up to the banger and gets things far and everything. And then we have workshops and advanced care planning. So we have three full-time, one part-time person. This year, we served nine patients in the area. The numbers are down a little, but I think it's part of it is we're not getting referrals from the physicians at the health center. So we're working on that, getting them. We get them, but it's too late. It's like two weeks, three weeks before, and then they're gone. So we like to get them earlier to get to meet, you know, get to know them before. We just had a patient die last week. So, you know, it doesn't take much sometimes for us to do. But I've been with them since nineteen seventy-five, and I'm the coordinator for Bucksport. I love it very much. So we're going to continue, even if we aren't supported, but we need, you know, we do a lot of extra things through recruitment, training. I just went to a workshop on, for us, even though, you know, we've been volunteers for a long. We can learn all the time. We're going into palliative care, and a lot of people don't know what that means. And so hospice care and palliative care, what is that? Is that the same? So we're trying to educate the community, and we're going to work on that a lot more. Because people are afraid of the word hospice. They hear, "You got a hospice volunteer?" "Oh, yeah." So we're working on the other things. So, okay?
All right. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you for letting me speak for you.
Community Health and Counseling Service. Amanous Homeless Shelter. Main Family Planning. Family First Community Center. Red Cross. Home Health Hospice. Healthy Equality Alliance. Okay, that's it for social.
I just want to talk, you know, in the past, and it made this seem common every time we've come up with this budget thing. The folks that show up, I think, deserve our support. And I'm real concerned when people just send us a blank piece of paper that says, "Give us some money." And I throw that out to everybody, but when we get to the final numbers, let's make sure we kind of remember who's here and who wasn't and kind of look at that as we pass out the money that's hard-earned for folks to support the things that are going on around here.
Yeah, it's kind of segue into, as I look out here, and this is my second or third year, second year, I guess, going through this, can't remember. But, you know, I look at the people that contribute so much to the community. And when you come up here and you're asked for money for what you're doing, it's humbling because you're giving so much back, you know? All, I look at the faces out here in the crowd, and so many of you give so much to the community. So thank you for what you do.
My reputation precedes me. Just a suggestion on the line of what Peter just said. Possibly on these applications, if it was noted that your presence at the meeting with these is going to be discussed, it might help bring them here so that you can have people to discuss what you're trying to give them money for.
Good point.
They're notified when they...
They know they're making the application. They know what it is.
It says that it will be, the council will be discussing them on, so.
Okay, we're going to go on to community agencies. You got a list of them there? I got to be there, anyway, I think. Bucksport Memorial Library.
Nancy Bergon, trustee of the Buck Memorial Library and treasurer. And I would like to give you a few things about the library, which I'm sure most of you have heard before. We are made up of trustee, a group of trustees, according to the deed which we received when the library was set up. And the budget request this year is fourteen thousand dollars, as it has been since two thousand and two. We've not asked for any more because we've improved our handling of our money and increased our investments tremendously. Salaries this year are two percent raise for the two librarians, part-time librarians, I should say. And also, let's see, we have around, operating budget, around seventy thousand dollars, which includes the salaries, our part-time for two librarians, as I said before. An endowment income of around forty-eight to fifty thousand dollars income. Book budget is around nine thousand dollars. We received a beautiful grant of four thousand dollars this year for children's books. I don't know if you've seen them or not, or we'd love to have you come in and see them. And on top of that, we will have our usual nine thousand dollars for new books and so forth. Most of the rest of the money comes from Bucksport, fourteen thousand, we hope. Orland, twenty-one hundred. Verona, five thousand. We have non-residencies. We have an ongoing used book sale and donations. We started a donation setup each year, and it has worked wonderfully, particularly for our construction that's been going on. Town support has been since nineteen oh five. Went from twelve hundred to fourteen thousand from nineteen fifty on. And we've never asked for any more since then because we improved our investing, as I had mentioned before. And our support from the people around here and of those that use it also have increased. Most towns this size have totally municipally-run libraries, but ours is not. And our budget, well over a hundred thousand dollars, or a million dollars even, from some of the small towns around here, including Ellsworth, which puts about a million dollars into their library. And the trustees keep their funds for special projects on the way. So if anyone ever wants to see the comparison, I think maybe you know that the main state library statistics reports are out each year. And if you wish to see a comparison of our library and the other libraries and how their money comes, where it comes from, and how it's spent, you can see them there. Know if I can tell you anything else? If there's anything else you'd like to know about the library? And I hope you all come and visit us. We are for everybody. And beyond the number of people that we have taking cards out, which would be our usual way we find out how many people are using it, we also have a lot of people who come in and use the taxes, Wi-Fi, research, genealogy, local history. That's our big thing, is local history. A lot of people use it for that. And we have phone requests from all over the country, of people who want our librarians to look up and find out about their past and mail it back to them, which is all taken care of by and very gladly by all of our workers. Anything else I can tell you, I would be glad to...
How's the repayers to the library going?
Excuse me?
The repayers to the library?
Yes. They, we had to stop because of the cold weather. We hope to get a little bit further. But they were there the other day, and I think they're about ready to start again. And we should be done soon, and that would make all, with the two fireplace areas. Fireplace wall, for those of you who've all been in there, the, I guess I should call it the, it's not the reading room. It's the, yeah, the opposite room, has a big fireplace. And then after that's finished, that whole wall, the, just the fireplace area of the other room will be done. And we hope to be done by June, July, hopefully, we're not...
Is that the last of this phase?
Yeah. We will go all the way around. And now, from then on, we'll have to go back and improve our improvements, probably. It goes on, around and around and around.
Why do you think not to use the building?
Any questions?
Anything I can...
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next being the Family Snowmobile Club. Basically requesting registration fees. Asking for seventeen hundred. That's just an estimate of what they'll take in in registration fees?
We, you said it's a pass-through for the registration fees for the work that they do in maintaining materials.
Okay. Next one being Fort Knox. Anybody here from Fort Knox? I think this is...
It's the same appropriation.
Yeah, that's where I think we fund the lighting on the floor. Bucksport Bear Chamber of Commerce.
Hello, everyone. I'm going to take that down, my needle's spaced. First, I want to just say that I didn't give you guys a letter this year. I usually write a letter. But I didn't do that this year for a couple of reasons. As you know, things are a little unsettled right now with the Chamber, with us. First, we were just trying to find a place to go, and then we found a place, and now we have to move. So I've been operating out of my living room, which has been entertaining. And Alicia comes in, we set up our little workspace. It's nice. So I felt bad about that. But what I did make sure I supplied you guys was something that I think sadly I'd been remiss in the years past. Listen, because, I know this isn't really an excuse, but the truth is, is that this job for me was something I had never really done before. This is a new kind of thing for me. I've been a manager of a camera store. I've been a photography teacher. I've been all these other different things in a business owner myself, but not in this capacity. So one of the things that I put in here was just a little quick list, a little infographic, because you know, they're fun to make, of how many businesses we represent, how many civic members we have as far as organizations, and how many employees, roughly, although not everybody, I think, is honest, and how many employees. They want to make their fee a little lower, and that's fine. So, and how, like, how many online visitors we have. We had a hundred and thirty thousand online visitors this last calendar year. That's fairly amazing to me. And it's kind of fun because you get to track that now, right? Technology lets you do it. We had, we've got seven thousand and six hundred and eighty-five Facebook followers. That's not just the people that like your page. Those are people that have actually made the point to say, "I'm going to follow what you do." So that's kind of exciting. And that's over more than just one page. That's over our events, because, you know, we do all the different types of events. We've got our newsletter, which has seven hundred and three active people that have subscribed to it, with a thirty-four percent and higher open rate, which is pretty unheard of. We, yes, we have to estimate, obviously, because we don't have somebody standing there with a ticket, and we're not taking tickets. But from just looking at crowd numbers over this last calendar year from all the different events, with annual meeting, Cross Fest, Pixie Harbor Hoopla, the Bay Festival, of course. Our golf tournament was here in Bucksport this year. And then Go Sport. And we're all the way around. There's a lot. We brought in about eleven thousand, seven hundred and seventy people. That's pretty impressive. It's a lot of folks. Our membership orientation, we've been doing that, that's new. Fifty people came in over two different sessions. I think that's nice. Ten thousand-plus visitor's guides are put out, thanks to our efforts. And then people actually walking in the center, it's about three hundred. But we live in a digital world now. So that's okay. I think that's a pretty, that's a pretty decent number still. And most of them are older. They come in and they want to know where stuff is, and we send them in their direction. So losing our home immediately was a little distressful, just because I feel like we play an important part in our town. I think that the money that you guys appropriate to us, as well as all the different efforts we put forward, are used to market our town. That's how I see what we do. I mean, yes, an organization like a Chamber is to market its members. And yes, my members are regional. But because I'm on Bucksport's Main Street, you guys get the lion's share of what happens. That's why the things happen here, right? It's why Go Sport's here. That's why, because why would I go someplace else? So, that being said, we're going to be right next door to where we were. So that's good. I think that's important. I think people, those three hundred people will find us again. We're right there. I have changed a little bit the structure in which, in which I'm asking for appropriations. You guys might see that that number is different than the year before. We had asked for thirteen thousand prior, and in the times before. Now I'm asking for nine, because that nine is just going to be for our operations. And I've separated out the Bay Festival, because the Bay Festival is so big now, thanks to last year's efforts and thanks to you guys really seeing that it could be bigger. It kind of has its own thing now, which is really exciting and fun. So that's where we're at. And if you guys have any questions, I really want to hear them about what we do or who we represent or, because I think there might be some questions. There might be, what, what do we do for you? And I want to answer this.
How is, is your membership, and maybe I missed this, both of the numbers, that changed, gone up, gone down?
Well, in the five years I've been there, it's come up considerably. When I started, it was a hundred and thirty-four members. We're up to a two-hundred-and-two. That number has essentially kind of stayed that way for the past three years. We, you know, lose a few members, gain a few more. I think the biggest, the highest we got was two-hundred-and-seven. And then, and then it backed back down again. And that's just, things come and go, you know? But at the very top here, we gained twenty-one new members last year, which is a really big number when you look at the percentage there. And that, so it was a seventy-seven percent retention rate of who we already have as members. We have some members that have truly been members of the Chamber since it started, nineteen ninety-one. But we have a lot of members that really came on within the last five years. I mean, that's a big jump. I had a member come to me and say, and I really took this as a compliment. He came to me and he said, when I first, when I, my financial, sure. Sorry, I thought somebody said question. I'm sorry. When, he said, when I first, my financial advisor told me not to join the Chamber. He's on Verona Island. And he said, that's what, thanks. That's what I was told to do. He said, but two years later, so this was in the last five years, two years later, my financial advisor said, now is the time to join the Chamber. Because he saw the difference that we were making. When I came on board, you guys see the numbers there, that original budget I got, that I received, was four thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars in the hole, and we've taken it, and we have increased. Last year, we did take a little hit, it's okay, because there was a lot going on, a lot of moving pieces, and that's more than fine. You know, every year, I just try to budget to zero, is what I'm really doing. When I have a surplus, yay for me. So, we tend to, we kind of, I've tried to kind of stockpile it, because you never know what could happen. If we would've had fifteen thousand dollars handy, I would've put a bid in, obviously I would've lost, but I still would've tried. So, we're just really excited to be here, and not just because of all the things that have happened of recent, but because all the things that have happened of recent. Because we were one of the few entities that were putting on events and doing things prior to everything that changed. And there's like, I've said it before, I'll say it again, it was like when everybody else came along, and Paula started Wednesdays on Main, when Heart and Soul got started, when Main Street got started, it was like I was not alone dancing on the stage. And that's pretty exciting.
Do you have some members outside of, I mean, we know that Roan and the local, but beyond those boards?
Yes, actually, if you go online, on our website, you can see our membership app, and it's actually even expanded. We actually have members now in Boe Harbor, you would've thought that, but because they hear about the things we're doing, and they see it's as progressive, and so they've joined. We're entertaining for the first time in at least ten years, that I can tell, and records that I can find, the idea of increasing our rates. It's something that hasn't been done in a really long time, and it couldn't have come at a better time in a weird way, because now, you know, we're gonna have to look at where, what are we gonna do? Now, are we gonna try and find a building to buy? Are we gonna, what are we gonna do? And this is really kind of forced that hand, and I think that's okay. I like change, I like to have to be challenged in some ways. We, when we had our emergency meeting about everything, one of the things that was brought up was, of course, was, you know, should we just dissolve? I know that might be shocking, but when you work with a zero budget, right, something that's supposed to be zero, and all of a sudden, you're looking at the prospect of having a rent, or something, that was brought up. Thankfully, everybody there said, no way. We, there, we see what you do. And that was pretty exciting. So, they didn't want to do that. Larry Wall is who found us the space, negotiated that lease, and it's gonna work for us for now, and we'll do probably a capital campaign, because that lease is for a year, you know, it's not forever, and we'll see what we can make happen, but my intention, I'm hoping to stay here, you know? Roan has, Island has asked us if we'd like to go there, and I want to be here, I want to be here on Bucksport's Main Street. So, there we are.
I think, I think we need a Chamber of Commerce, and I think overall, I don't know who would pick up the slack for all this stuff that you've done, quite frankly, and I think you deserve our support.
David?
You have a question before you leave?
Yes.
Area served Bucksport, Roan Island, Orland, Castine, Dedham, Searsport, Stockton Springs, Prospect, and Winterport.
Right.
What do these other communities contribute?
Well, sadly, sadly, Orland gives us a thousand dollars. Castine and Roan Island essentially pay for a membership, which in their case, Roan Island gives us a hundred and twenty-five dollars, which is fine, but Castine pays us whatever their office staff is, and right now, I can't honestly off the top of my head remember what that is, I think it's one seventy-five.
Why aren't you knocking on their door?
Well, honestly, you're right. I mean, there was a time when there wasn't enough membership, like you had one member in that community, right?
Yeah, 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 I get that.
But as it's increasing, yes, I totally agree with that statement. Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else, guys?
Thank you.
We got a question up back.
Of course.
You said that you, you lost twenty-three percent of your original members, or of your members last year?
No. We retained, meaning people that renewed their membership, at seventy-seven percent. We gained twenty-one new members over that, same time period.
Well, you retained seventy-seven percent, so you actually lost over the age of twenty-three?
Of the, of those, of those, yes.
What are, what were the reasons that they left up?
Oh, it's various. Some of them go out of business, that's the thing, sadly. I wish it wasn't, but I can't make them out. Sometimes it's, believe it or not, we did, get told this, we don't need more business, which boggles my mind, because I think to myself, how is that getting only possible? And okay, so, yeah.
How does one become a member?
You apply, and you pay a due, that's really it.
And the dues is based on?
Based on how many full-time or full-time equivalent employees you have. So, two part-timers equals a full timer. That kind of idea.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, the next one is Bucksport Bay Festival.
Hello, everyone. How are you?
Good.
Thank you for allowing us to speak tonight. So, the Chamber put in a request for fifteen thousand dollars for funding of this year's Bucksport Bay Festival. I'm Shelby Wright, I'm the coordinator of the festival again this year, so. So, last year, we asked for forty thousand. We were granted thirty-five thousand, we gave you five thousand dollars back.
Well, yeah.
I was like, I'm getting there.
Yes, that's right.
We gave you the job for a reason, damn sorry. So, we gave you five thousand dollars back. And so, this year, we'd like to put in a request for fifteen thousand dollars to help offset the cost of fireworks, advertising, entertainment.
Part of that fifteen is four that the Chamber used to get us, that we used to give them for the fireworks, so that will go into the, right? Is that, is that why you're asking for less, Leslie? Okay. And what's your plans?
So, well, this year, obviously, we're gonna have a lot less money, but we're gonna do as much as we can with that same money. I took a little bit of a, of a cut in pay, we've cut some of the budgets back a little bit, but with a little bit more active fundraising than we did last year, and some new sponsors, and some new interests in town, I think I might be able to balance the scale out from the loss of the town revenue. Building upon the success of last year, I think is gonna be key. We've set the bar, now we have to keep that bar. My fear is that we don't maintain that bar, then people are gonna come back this year, and if it's not as good as last year, they're gonna say, eh, and then they're not gonna come back the next year, right? So, now we, we've got that expectation level. So, we're again planning the Friars Invitational Brew Fest, which is really exciting. I've been talking to Brother Donald a lot, they're gonna be launching a new beer at this year's Beer Fest, and we've invited eight other brewers to join. They're also going to be very much more active this year in the Brew Fest than they were last year, not only physically present, but also pouring and helping to advertise and cross-promote. We've just started talking about the street dance, I booked the fireworks, we've got, we've been working, I've been working with the police department on kind of like jazzing up the street dance a little bit this year. Entertainment, the parade, five K, and we already have a sponsor, no, not a sponsor for the five K, but the YMCA is gonna help us out with the five K this year, and children's events as usual, and just try to build on all of that. We were talking about a theme for the parade, we're gonna send out, you know, try to have an overall theme for the event. So, we're just gonna build on what we had, and attract as many vendors and as many people. One of the conversations was that we needed to bring more seniors into the event to expand out, so I'm looking forward to exploring that option, and to working with some of the senior groups in town, and seeing how we might be able to also attract, you know, move people, young and old, into the festival, instead of just, you know, the children and the family, so.
What's the date this year?
This year, good question. This year is July twentieth, twenty-first, and twenty-second. It'll, again, it's gonna be about seventy-eight degrees with low humidity and bright blue skies.
Guaranteed, right?
Worked last year. Hey, if it doesn't rain on Zoo Day, it just doesn't happen. So, without the bank. Then we've, working with Willie Kelly again to help book the music, you know, some of the, a lot of the volunteers from last year are back. We've talked to folks, we've debriefed a lot about what we can do better, what we can do different, what we can move, what we can tweak, and I'm really excited about doing it again. And I sent out an email on Tuesday and raised six thousand dollars from it, so, it looks like that. Didn't even have to pick up the phone. So, hopefully that'll, it'll be that easy from here on out, but.
Well, thanks for your efforts last year, it was really a wonderful time, and I guess you fell in love with the community, just had to come back, right?
Well, yeah, I mean, I, I've gotta say, I said so last year, it was an absolute pleasure working and being in Bucksport for that time, and like I said, even though I would love to take your town manager back with me to Hampden, I know that's not a possibility, so if I have to go to the mountain, then Shelby has to go to the mountain.
Any questions from the public, from the council? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your support.
Okay. Next one is Main Street Bucksport.
John Paul Alon, I'm on the board, Main Street, and, you know, last year, when we came for a request, twenty thousand dollars, which is the same for this year, it was kind of four major items that were our events, it was Film Festival, the Art Festival, activities around Christmas, and the, and the Grig to Gap race. This year, there's those same four events, but we added a number of things. One may be a big one, if we get a grant for it, but little things like, there's a, Second Friday, I think, called Coffee. So, there was, there were some of that, I can't remember what, that brought a lot of merchants together, I think it was to talk about the activities that was gonna go on at Christmas time. And one of the, some of the merchants said, geez, you know, we, we really enjoyed this, we'd like to have a monthly thing where we get together and just talk about concerns we have, what's going well for downtown businesses. So, our director, Brooke, organized every, you know, Second Friday, to have a coffee hour, and in the morning before the business is open, and it's, it's been pretty successful, you know, ten to twenty people, men showing up every, every Friday, and, or every, you know, once a month, and, you know, just, just something that isn't a big thing, but, you know, it's bringing the merchants together and talk about concerns they have. Another thing is, we partnered with the Chamber and Eastern Main Development, and to bring a meeting about business issues, kind of a business one-on-one, if you will, for small businesses. You know, a lot of partnership going on with the Chamber, with other organizations in town, participating in, in Council, Carmichael's group that, you know, gets a lot of the nonprofits together and talk about what's going on. And then the big event that we hope to be able to take place is, we put in a grant for a, a speaker series, and so, the idea came out when, you know, a group was getting together and started to see how was a lot of Bucksport alumnis have been real successful in different, different things in their careers, and so they, you know, a small group got together and worked with schools to come up with a list of alumni that, you know, may be interesting to bring in and, and give a talk on, on what they, you know, their careers. And so, we submitted a grant to the Main Community Foundation to help fund that, and if it takes place, it'll be something that takes place in the fall, it'll be kind of jointly between the schools where they talk to the students, but then they give a presentation, kind of a, over three different nights downtown at the Alamo. You know, the format of it isn't all finalized yet, but that, that would not only bring, you know, alumni back to the area, to talk about what they're doing, but, you know, be able to share that with the students and, and, you know, foster aspirations within the school, so. We think the money that we've gotten from the town has helped us leverage grants, we've been pretty successful over the years getting grants. So, you know, in two thousand and sixteen, we got ten thousand dollars to start the Film Festival, we got forty-five hundred dollars kind of startup funds for fundraising events, and develop our website and whatnot. Two thousand and seventeen, we got thirty-five hundred dollars for the Art Festival, twenty-five hundred dollars for Film Festival during the off-season, so you're seeing, this year, we're having, the Film Festival isn't just a weekend event, there was a film last month, and it will be here every month, that kind of ties into the theme of the Maritime, International Maritime Film Festival. Grants we've submitted for, for this year is nine thousand dollars for the Speaker Series I mentioned, and five thousand dollars for a Student Film Festival. So, the idea of that is to work with the high school and have them develop a film, you know, let them choose what that film would be, but something to do with some kind of activity going on in Bucksport, and have the students develop a film. So, you know, I, we're seeing more stuff going on with Main Street, you know, we think without this funding, it'd be difficult, a little difficult for us to be able to fund a director and without a director, and I don't think, you know, Main Street would be a program that would be able to continue, you know, as it's doing today. Any questions?
Yeah. How many board members do you have?
Let's see, we just added a couple, so, I believe we have seven or eight right now.
Okay. Are they all Main Street businesses?
There's a couple that are Main Street businesses, and then, so there's one that's kind of represents the Lighthouse, there's, well, we had a member who was an insurance agent on Main Street, and he left town, so, he himself, but we have made a concerted effort to try to increase the membership of businesses. Andy's on, on the board. Those are really two businesses right now that are representing in Main Street. We have other Main Street people who are, you know, businesses who are involved in activities, but not, have chosen at this time not to be members, you know, board members.
And how often do you meet the board?
We meet bimonthly.
Bimonthly?
Yeah.
Okay. I know, Dave, you had asked a question, you know, what would we do without the Chamber? I guess my question is, you know, if we pooled all the money together under one direction, would it better serve the community than having, say, duplicate directors working on similar things that both, you know, the Chamber basically works for development in the downtown area with businesses, are we getting duplication, you know, do we pool that money together, get more bang for our buck, or, or, right? Are people working against each other? I guess that's my question.
Yeah, I guess the way I'd answer that is, certainly the focus of Main Street Bucksport is, is Main Street. Bringing events, helping businesses on Main Street, trying to attract businesses to Main Street. Brooke worked closely with, with Rich on economic development issues for Main Street. Working on, you know, some of the Heart and Soul ideas that means- Working on, you know, some of the heart and soul ideas that Main Street adopted are specific to Main Street. You know, not that the Chamber doesn't have an effort on Main Street, the Chamber effort is much broader for the whole town and in the whole area where the Main Street is really focused on, on Main Street.
Yeah, earlier I thought the opinion, well, it seems to me is that the Chamber has got nine-ish municipalities that they're dealing with and folks out there, and they're more focused. I think the money that we pay the director here is very well-spent, as opposed to going out and having some professional marketer come in. Just the events that they pulled off, I think that Main Street has created a brand for the town of Bucksport, you know, the significance of the events and so forth. Not that the Chamber, it's just, I see two different things, but I just see that this is Bucksport-focused, it's a, it's a great marketing thing, it's a brand, the race matched out with the number of people this year. Anyway, my, again, my two cents, thank you.
I think we, we looked at that in those, in the meeting when we first started, in the very first couple of meetings, is, you know, is there duplication, is there overlap? And come away from that thinking that there may be some pockets where they meet, but as you've indicated, the Chamber was the broader, bigger picture piece of it. Main Street's a more focused targeted piece, and then Wednesday's on Main is even more narrowly focused. So they may touch each other, but they don't, at least I came out of there thinking they don't necessarily get in the way or duplicate things too much. I think it's been helpful that way, at least, to talk about what each does in those meetings. To me, one of the big things that I was successful with then at being able to target and receive grants, and I, I know serving on a foundation that, you know, awards grants, it's very important to see that it has the community support. When we review grants, it's one of the, it's not a deal-breaker, but if a community supports something, we're much more willing to support it.
I want to address this. Um, Rob has, you've touched on it, and so have you. I think the real difference, in my mind at least, is that because we are regional, right? Because we do serve more communities than that. At first, we really did kind of operate, the Chamber did, honestly, my first strategic plan, if you read it, we kind of operated like a Main Street. We focused most of our attention on Bucksport, because that's where people are. And that's just how we knew that we could get from where I started to where I was trying to go, right? When Dave Mylan first approached me with the whole idea of being a Main Street community, I was totally excited about that prospect of having another group that literally could shoulder some of the work. That's how I see that. And with the focus being the way it is, all it really does, butting up against is a perfect example, talk about your password quilt, you know, so if we're doing something this weekend, and Main Street's doing something this weekend, and Wednesday's on Main happens here, and then now it's our turn again, that's just more for everybody involved. That's really what's happening. Brooke and the board can focus on what's happening in this little strip. My focus then can be so much broader. It opens up what I can do. I'm looking to start a new strategic plan this year. And that's one of the reasons, because I literally checked off all the boxes down the whole thing, and now all these new things are in place, time for a new plan. So, yeah, I think they're all equally important.
One of the things I don't see in, from either group or any group, was the impact? What are we seeing?
Well, 11,000 people, we brought in.
But monetary impact, I mean, we can have 11,000 people.
Sure, that's fair, no, you're absolutely correct. Well, that, you're right, I mean, you could ask my businesses.
Well, I think that's what I'm asking. Why isn't that done, so we can see something?
Right, okay, I can, I can ask them, I can poll them that, I don't have a problem with that.
I think that's something that people up here would like to see.
Yeah, value is the benefit minus the cost.
Sure, and I can understand that as well. Yeah, and that's very.
Because we hear numbers all the time, but what does that mean to the folks?
Right, what does that mean to them?
Why aren't the folks on Main Street joining your organization? Are they not seeing a benefit for it, or what, you know, why is that? I think that's something that allows us to be able to, to be able to fund these things and figure out if yes, there is a value to it, other than having things without any economic impact.
I mean, anecdotally, all, anytime you go into a business during an event, they are, yay, this is my best day, right? Those are the kind of words we get.
But I think we're looking at 365 days, is what we should be looking at.
Sure, sure, I agree.
You can't sustain on one day.
No, you cannot, but GoSport brings in people, and they talk about that's their best day. Pixie Harbor Hoopla, although it's a very small one, is still starting.
But for the whole time I've been here, I've never heard of a number that somebody said, anecdotally doesn't work.
Sure, no, and I get that.
Unfortunately, doesn't it?
How would you want that, how would you want that information collected? I mean, I'm really serious.
Well, I would guess that the State Chamber of Commerce, there must be, every town that has a chamber, there must be something out of the state, there's some, there's got to be some, some formula, some way, metric that they can grab to do that.
We'll reach out to them and see.
I can't believe you're the first one that would have asked that question, so there's got to be something.
Right. Part of the, yeah, well, part of what's different, though, about our chamber is we are event-driven. Like, for instance, Bangor's Chamber doesn't do events, right? It's member-driven, but then, of course, their membership is almost four times as much as ours. So, you know what I mean?
Well, they do business after hours.
They do business after hours, right, which, I mean, right, and those are all, that's a different kind of, right, but it's not the kind of event that brings people into town. Yeah, well, yeah, but you know what I mean? So, but I will reach out to them and ask them, like, is there a metric that I can use for that? Because I'd be curious on how truly to collect that information, in a way, other than when they come and say, do that again, because that made me happy.
I mean, you know, when we see, when we see from Bucksport Community Concerns, that they're serving 400 meals a week or something, those things mean something to me, I don't know, you know, that's just something to put my fingers around, so.
No, I totally hear that.
It's like a party, okay. It's party-suited. So my question is this, so I'm a data geek, I'm an analytical, like, crazy, I don't read a spreadsheet really well, but I get, I get numbers. My question is this, like, I think it would be a fascinating experiment to figure out how we can track, you know, the fiscal benefit of, you know, say, a one-day event versus a three-day event, you know, et cetera, et cetera. Now, obviously, I don't have grant money to put together a data set and source data for that, but I would be willing to entertain the experiment for the Bucksport Bay Festival as part of, you know, a fact-finding mission, whether it's a survey, whether we want to put together some sort of, like, questionnaire, how is it here, how is it there, what were your daily receipts? I mean, I would really be interested if people would opt in to kind of a economic survey.
My point is, they should opt in, because this is their money that's being spent.
Well, they should, yeah.
They see a value for it.
But obviously, when you're going to ask, you know, you're going to ask somebody for personal data, like, what were your cash receipts for that day? You need to, you know, but I think people would go for it. But I'd be really interested to try to put together some sort of, you know, a study that was a case study on the impact of the Bucksport Bay Festival for, you know, 2018. Obviously, that puts a little bit more pressure on me to earn my money, you know, because we want to make sure you just make people.
There's a lot of things that go into, it's like, it's like marketing. We struggle in my business with, you know, what are we getting back for this marketing that we do? Some of it is somewhat tangible, but a lot of it is not.
Well, I still am.
The same thing with the concerts in Bangor, they know the economic multiplier, or at least they've got an estimate of the economic multiplier, but it's an estimate, so maybe we can come up, there's got to be that sort of stuff.
And that's all I'm asking. I guess the concert is a great thing, is that brings, we're bringing people here, what are they doing, are they just walking up and down Main Street?
Right, how many hotel rooms are ready? How many people buy gas? How many, yeah, how many cheeseburgers do they sell after the concert?
That, to me, would be some information.
Well, let's talk about it, because I'd be interested to explore, obviously not now, because this is up to date, but I'd be interested.
Plus it's nine o'clock.
Anyway, thank, thank you very much, we appreciate it. Thank you, John Paul.
John Paul, thank you.
Okay, anybody want to get a drink of water or anything before we go to the budget workshop?
That actually was part of the budget workshop.
I also, I think John Paul was right that the, I'm working with the Coalition right now, we just lost their director, and their chances of getting grant money are slim, and I'm just going to be scratchy people right now, I want to see even a full-time attorney or a paid director.
And what, didn't that you, how do you figure it?
We do TV, print media.
The worst thing about it, you can't use grant money to pay a director.
Like, if somebody comes in for a loan, they say, yeah, I saw the app, you can get that data. And some of it is like a trust, it's like a faith sort of thing.
You're saying they're here because of.
Yeah, it's somewhere, but your point is, the Chamber, State Chamber ought to be able to get, so.
No, I actually agree with you, because I can't, I have to be quiet.
At least for a part of it.
You never going to get it, but I agree with you.
Jim had a question back on that line.
You have a question about what we were just talking about?
Yes.
Come on up.
There's more I think in Main Street than there was for yesterday.
According to the way this is spelled out, this money is going to be used for, it will be used to help offset the costs of paying a part-time director. That's their use of the money. And their statement before that was that without this money, they would need to eliminate the part-time executive director. In our ordinances, that can't happen. We have an ordinance that says that you can't be on the council if your spouse is an employee of the town.
Oh, Jim, come on.
And this, oh, sir, it's.
It's an organization.
I don't think that's relevant here, because she's not getting paid by the town.
Does she get, she didn't get paid by the town.
She gets paid by John Paul, right?
It's a 501(c)(3).
Yes, it's a registered 501(c)(3).
Next, let's go.
Okay, the first departmental budget that we're talking about tonight is the Police Department. Chief Gagan is here. I've got the overview sheet on, up at the, at the top, but you have the backup that identifies what goes into all of these items. There's not a dramatic overall change in the police budget for this year. Animal control has an increase, and wages has an increase. And wages, although when we asked our departments for sort of what they saw their future needs being, when Chief Gagan submitted his, he submitted that an additional person would be in need, that would, that's not in this budget. It doesn't mean that I don't recognize that there's pressure on certain shifts that just are never filled by a full-timer, they're always filled by somebody else in order to do that. The thing that this budget does, as proposed, is to make adjustment in the administrative personnel, they're also working people, but they're the non-union personnel in the department, which is the chief and Sergeant Winchester. And in reviewing salaries of those in comparable-sized communities, both were significantly under what others in comparable communities were making. And our union contracts have allowed step raises and raises that people get after a certain number of years, but the administrative personnel have been awarded just cost of living on an every-year basis. So what happens is that the gap between the, your management and your, your others has gotten to the point where with any amount of overtime, you have a, can have a person who's making more than your leadership. And that's not, it's not an appropriate way to do that. And I believe that just because they have longevity here, that they're doing a good job, their job is getting more difficult, not easier, and so this budget makes some adjustment in that. And when I say make some adjustment, the entire adjustment for full-time wages is $10,000, and that covers the adjustments to their wages plus the, all the officers as well. So it's, I'm not talking million dollars. It takes the chief to a salary of $70,000, and it takes Sergeant Winchester to a salary of $58,000. And that's my proposal, and I'd be happy to share the information that identifies the comparative salaries in communities our size and in this area, as well as the job description and the additional duties that both carry. So that's, I'm being upfront with you about what I've put in this budget and why. It's not a huge monetary hit, but it's, it's an adjustment based on the fact that for many years, there's only been cost of living and no adjustment as other employees get for longevity, which is the two-year, four-year, 10-year, 15-year, 20-year type of things that they get.
There are times when fair is fair. I know from being in the business for over 20 years that a chief's rate of pay for what we are at now is absolutely criminal. So this is, in my opinion, long overdue as an administrative person handling a police department with everything that's involved with it. I can almost guarantee he's still well below the curve. This is just playing catch-up a little bit, so.
This doesn't take him to the top of anything. It takes him to lower-middle of.
Closer to the curve.
Where we are.
I agree with you. He's still well below what he, where he should be, and, yeah, it's long overdue.
So that's my intro. The chief, if he has any specific, as I said, it's, it's ongoing. The capital improvements piece, I've already told you, includes a bump this year to replace two cruisers and then go to an annual replacement, because we're getting eaten alive in repair costs by doing every other year and having our cars in the condition that they are. The chief can speak to that when we get there, but this is, I take responsibility for the wage adjustment, and I wanted to be the one who explained that to you. But the chief is here, if anyone has questions on his overall department.
As Sue said, there's only a few other adjustments to the budget as you look down through the different lines. She went over the, we call it the 01 line, and it goes down through. The 02 line has a small increase, that's due to the union wages and vacation times and sick times. Training payroll is due to wages, to the union contract.
In reality, Sean, this is a 2% above increase from where you were last year, and it's.
2.3.
I mean, in reality, that's wages.
Yes, I would say majority of that is wages, yes. There's a few different things in there as far as.
And some, and most of those are union gratified wages, right?
That's true.
Thanks.
There's a few different things in there as far as smaller.
Just, did you mention the animal control?
Yeah, the animal control is unique in itself, because our animal control officer actually works full-time dispatch, and by wage and hourly, he has to make at least time and a half of minimum wage, and so the minimum wage increases throughout the state, the next three years have truly affected that, and that's why that number is where it's at. And that has gone up significantly in this, in the state.
Sorry, maybe I should move on. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Can we move on to the dispatch?
Yeah, I, I made, I'll be with them all. We just kept them open.
I would mention one more thing. It's the same thing with dispatches. You're gonna notice that in part-time, we have, as we said, we have shifts where there are part-time people working who do not enough full-time people to fill all the shifts. And you'll notice that there's an increase, small increase, to the part-time dispatching and patrol wages to bring them more in line with actually what a start, just below what a starting person makes is doing the same job that they do, but not the starting wage.
Dispatch. Dispatch is, it's a 1.73% increase in the, if you look, it's all in the wage categories and that's based on the negotiated changes in the contract. I talked about it before when I did the overall budget, but Orland has, has decided to go in another direction with Hancock County. That's not an option that, that the town could entertain at this point if it wanted to. The county dispatch system doesn't have the ability to handle the volume and type of calls that we have at this point. They don't have the staffing or the facilities and would require more of both to do that. The interesting part is that even though Orland goes to Hancock County for dispatch, the ambulance that Orland contracts for will still end up being dispatched through Bucksport. It'll just go to Hancock County first. It won't be a direct call to us for those who are used to doing that kind of thing. But, but because Bucksport Dispatch dispatches our ambulance and our ambulance is the ambulance service for Orland, that will still continue.
I'm not sure Orland's gonna end up too happy with all this, but that's not our concern.
But I'm just explaining where, where, where we are at this point. They're using the spillman system, I believe successfully.
Yeah, very well.
It's going very well, but this is where we are in terms of dispatch to do what we do regionally because there's been discussions of why don't we? That, I spoke with representatives from the county commissioners a little over a year ago and they were talking about adding a building and adding people and doing those kind of things. And then they went to the point where they were gonna turn over dispatch to Penobscot County and they backed away from that and have settled back into where they are. But the only community of any size that they dispatch for is Ellsworth at night and the addition of this isn't workable at this time. Is that a fair representation there?
And the spillman issue was that when they get the call, our dispatch center actually gets it on the screening before they perform the dispatch, so they know what's coming. They notify the ambulance by bells, by intercom and they care how to do whatever they had to do so you get ready when the call comes in.
Oops. This one, this next, ambulance or fire?
I got fire.
Okay. Everyone's sitting down.
So fire did roughly about 1,100 calls last year for fire. 900 ambulance, 200 fire calls. And police did 6, 7,000 range.
Total calls for service, everything you do is probably 6, 7,000. That moves everything.
So back to the point, you know, how can, that's all they're gonna get. The numbers are all they're gonna go on.
They're only going up. I hear that.
So you said you had, fire was next?
Yes.
Okay. Here's where everyone thinks they're gonna have a heart attack, but you're not.
Maybe.
You're not. David might, but hopefully nobody else will. The, the fire budget looks $213,000 higher than it did last year. It looks that way because of the addition of two full-time people and their attendant costs. What it doesn't reflect is an additional $83,000 in revenue from the grant that you're receiving. An additional, I, I low estimated additional for transfers this year of $50,000, which in following years will be more, but we're, we just have two new people coming on now and getting everything up to speed is gonna take. So the, and the change to two people per shift. There's three things moving here. And the fact is that even if you hadn't received the grant, I'd be standing here telling you that we needed to do something different with the way we were staffing the fire slash EMS because payrolls were seeing individual employees working 180 hours or more in a two-week period and that that isn't sustainable and it isn't safe. We've talked about this for a couple of years now and the grant has helped to mitigate the impact of that. But this is also our first year running this through and, and looking at calculating what wages will cost and how much vacation will need coverage and all of these kinds of things. It's been budgeted to be extremely, to, as if everybody was gonna do everything that they were entitled to do when they could in order to see at the end of the year how the budget actually ends up in terms of those kinds of coverages. Fire is up that much. If you take away that revenue and ambulance is down approximately $25,000 because of the change in coverage. We talked about combining these two budgets. We did not do that in this year with this grant. The, the grant is a, has to reflect fire personnel. We can use them for other things, but you have to be able to point to that as a budget. Chief Baden is here to explain the other. Salaries are one thing, but clothing allowance and training and all those kind of things are other things that come along with it. There will be, and you'll see this in capital, there's, there's a request to add a, replace an ambulance this year because of where we are in terms of that condition. But that's the outline of why these numbers look the way they do. The net impact after revenues is much less than what the budget reflects, but we knew when we talked about adding people and changing staffing mechanisms that it was going to have a different-looking bottom line. When we, when we get to the revenue side of the budget, that will be clear. I'm sorry, chief, done? Did you have...
Not a whole lot. She mentioned the, the grant. It's gonna replace like 62,000 of this, but there's also about 38,000 that's gonna be a bit available for the benefit package for those two people as well. Overall, it's 98,000 and change per year that the feds are responsible for. Some of them look like really large increases when you look at the percentage. Training expenses, $1,300 for now seven full-time people and 30-some call members. That's, $1,300 is what we have been doing for, we actually went up $300 last year. It has always been underfunded. Most departments that I have spoken to, a lot of them have up to $1,000 per person for the full-timers. So we've, we've asked for an increase in that on 115%, but it's $1,500. Courses that are certified or something that counts towards something and made out of a class typically is $300 a day. It's had to, it's had to split $1,300 35 different ways and get any sort of training. We've been able to get eight or 10 state-certified instructors. It's where we were putting our money. So we do all of, a lot of our training in-house, so we're not paying $300 per person for a day to go get training that's required. So in, in the long run, we're providing a lot more than that back by not having to send people out. There's some stuff that you just have to send people out. The other big line item, equipment maintenance and repair. We got like 10 pieces of apparatus. If we do have to send it out, we're looking at $100, $120 an hour. That eats up $13,000 in a hurry. I've talked to some other departments that have three to four times that in similar departments, similar use. The increase that we've seen this year, we, three, four years ago, we went to a, it's a Department of Labor and main municipal-approved company near Augusta that does our pump testing. We used to do our own pump testing, which meant we, as the department and the town, took liability for anything that if a truck was at E.C. and it didn't work, something failed and we got sued, it was us saying that it was certified. It's not, it's not a good place to be in when you're doing business. So we have this company come in and do the certification. It's about $1,500 a truck and they go bumper to bumper, floor to ceiling. And anything that they find that they can fix right then, they fix. Last year, we ran into Engine Two, one of the newer units, had some, had some pump issues and we spent $4,000 or $5,000 on that in two days. So we've added the $1,500 per truck is most of that to go into the equipment maintenance and repair for the, the annual licensing testing. I will say, they put an inspection sticker on it, just like the state does when they do a state inspection. And when the Department of Labor or main municipal come in, they look at that sticker and they don't ask for your records, they don't ask to look at anything else. They're comfortable. This, this company is very reliable, so. Otherwise that, like she said, it's, it's a difficult adjustment to go from approved one to approved two and try to figure out where you're gonna be at the end of the year. But I think at the end of the year, we'll, we'll be able to do like we always do and turn money back to you, so.
You got a question on the fire call? What exactly is that?
On what?
Call firemen.
Call firemen?
That's the call members?
Okay, well, what I'm looking at is in 2016, 17, we budgeted 36,000 and you ended up spending 70% of that for 25. The next year, we budgeted 41,500 and year-to-date, you've spent 14,000 of that, which is 34%. But this year, we're asking for another three, oh, $3,200 increase. In the previous two years, we didn't, I mean, you came 70% one year. I mean, I mean, couldn't you leave that budget line the same because you've only spent, and we've only got a couple more months left in this budget cycle?
Some of that is the fact that the state passed a minimum wage and our fire, call firefighters will be below that every time they change it. So there's a 10% increase.
Well, yeah, but you only spent, you've only spent 34% this year.
Which...
14,000 out of the 41, 42,000 you got appropriate.
Which means it's been a good year. I, I certainly understand what you're saying, but it only takes one or two serious calls, either a Main Street call or a woods fire that, that goes three or four days and all of a sudden that disappears in a hurry. But I think the only, the only actual addition to it was going from minimum wage, jumping this year to the 10 and next year to 11. That was, that was the, that was the need, that was the reason for the adjustment this year. We didn't adjust the calls.
The same reason for the adjustment last year?
We went to 10, yes. We've, we've had years that we've been 95%. We've had years that we've been able to keep it at 60. It depends on the, the number of large calls. It only takes two or three, you know, your typical everyday calls, we can figure out. If you have something that lasts two or three days, it disappears in a hurry, so. And I'd rather turn it back at the end of the year than tell you in tributary when we're
That was gonna be my question is, is the, it's not used, it comes back into, into this one, the general one?
General one.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
The ambulance budget, if you'll notice, is, is down primarily due to a reduction of 33,860. And that, that's a reflection of the different staffing that's now, it shows, the full-time shows under the fire budget instead of...
You said next year, maybe you might combine these just so we can not have to worry.
We can still find a way to quantify for the grant purposes that this, the fire component has, when it makes it, but, because it, it really is a fire slash EMS operation. It's not, these are different bodies.
Well, I think that gets confusing that when you see one huge number over here and all of a sudden your, your revenues at the end of it are gonna balance all out. I think if we saw it all as one entity, I think it would make, ease the pain, maybe.
The only other increases to this budget are for ambulance supplies, which is we're looking at doing more types of runs than we do now. That will increase supply cost. And then a, an increase in the fuel, these are the other two substantial. Most of the ones are just small increases, but the net impact of this budget is down 27,000.
What do you mean, other types of runs?
Going to transfers.
Oh, I, I understand.
Which we now don't do. But the supplies component, it is a direct reflection of how many runs overall that we're doing and that number is going up. Did you have anything else on this, chief?
No.
But the, we do have two people now that are, if you remember, we had hired one who decided not to come after she accepted. They re-advertised. We have Chris Rendell, obviously, and the other is a young woman who is, worked full-time for county and will complete her paramedic here within the year. here within the year. And she was, worked some calls for us, but applied in the second round for the full-time position and I think she's going to be an excellent, she's already started county, waited her two-week requirement. So we have that and someone who will be in short order already at paramedic level, which is the bulk of the services. And the fire side can, the initial training can be in-house training because our staff is trained to the level to be able to do the course level. So they're at full strength pretty much. They're in, still in a training mode, but they're, those positions have been filled. Any other questions?
Is that it for tonight?
The only thing that's left is, that's under public, and it's not on the, but it's just utilities, it's streetlights and hydrant rental. And one is down slightly because of contract that we got for our, that even though rates were going up, ours were somewhat mitigated. But hydrant rental, if you remember several months ago, I told you about an almost 4 percent increase that wasn't part of the water rate, but it's an add-on on top of it, that now with this almost 4 percent increase is close to 11 percent of the additional bill. So the additional $8,000 appropriation is to cover the, that non-water rate increase increase that they added. But I had, this was something I, a couple of months ago, we talked about this.
Yeah.
That was coming along exactly. The only other thing listed here is debt service and the town of Bucksport's debt service for, it has no debt for general government. And the only thing you appropriate on an annual basis is $15,412 as a share of the cost of the small concentrators down here on Main Street that you help offset the sewer debt on that by $15,412 a year, but there's no other general fund debt. The only debt the town has is sewer debt, the sewer uses.
Speaking of debt, and this is nowhere near what debt is, I'm tired of explaining. The fiber rate is not built, but we're still only being charged the number that we recorded.
That's correct.
There's no other added fee on that.
There's no additional charge and they're paying us the addition, $110 an hour for additional time that it takes us to deliver to JRL in interim until fiber rate is open. And the cost of any, I ask, any damaged tires, et cetera, from having to go to a landfill because we were supposed to. The MRC had a contract with PERC to continue hauling to PERC until end. On the 29th of March, just a couple of days before that was supposed to happen, that fell apart because Norridge Walk Waste Management, who is MRC's bypass contract, refused to allow waste from MRC communities to go to PERC. Instead, they set up a trash swap with Casella. Casella brings the equivalent amount of waste from MRC communities in this region from Bitterford and the communities that were being hauled to Juniper Ridge, and that goes to Norridge Walk in addition to the waste from other communities in that area so that at the end of the day, Norridge Walk gets the total MRC tonnage in that landfill and the same amount of trash keeps going to Juniper Ridge as has been going. It just goes from communities in this region instead of communities in southern Maine.
Bottom line is it's not costing us any more money.
I've had many conversations with every level of government I could, because this is, the, the whole plan was supposed to be to allow, and they're contractually, Waste Management wouldn't allow it and they were forced to go to Juniper Ridge.
Thank you.
One more comment, all right, and then I'll get off my soapbox. In the past, in the last 20 years or so, you know, we always said, "Well, so what if we increase the budget a little bit? If we don't spend it, it'll go into undesignated funds at the end of the year." Basically, that was a good policy when we had to mill down the road and we wanted to keep this cushion of money in there. But again, it's, it's increasing the tax burden just to build up a surplus. I'd rather see us be, really scrutinize our spending based on what we've spent in the past so that the taxpayers aren't overcharged to put it into a, a balance sheet, so to speak, you know, undesignated funds. I'm not saying, you know, cut yourself completely, but you know, every year, "Oh, this will go up 5 percent. This will go up 5 percent." And you've never spent it in the past. Well, maybe we could, maybe only go up 2 percent. But we have this mindset, "Oh, we just carried over undesignated funds. It'll be fine," but it's still tax dollars. Why not let the taxpayers spend their money? That's it. I'm done.
Some of that, Mr. May, and some of that, so you know it's call-driven also. So if the town is willing to take, you know, if we don't have a lot of calls in overtime this year and I can save you that money, I save it.
Yeah.
But if you cut that and the call volume goes through the roof, the town needs to be prepared and pay that money.
Well, I'm just saying be more cautious and.
Well, I understand what you're saying, but a lot of ours is call-driven.
Yeah, yeah, I understand that.
Some years are a lot busier than others and some years we use it and some years we don't.
But do we really need, you know, $8 million on the, on designated surplus right now?
You don't have $8 million.
Careful, we may.
You don't have $8 million. And, and the, the counter side of department heads who manage their departments well and do, are able through whatever to turn money back, if the reward for that is cutting the budget so that there's not enough there if something does happen, then it's not encouraging people to manage their budgets well. I mean, there's a balance here. The minimum wage going up is not something that the town did, that how much of that spend, and I'm not even sure that all of the, all people turn in all of their time at the same time. We get lumps. Call people turn in hours that are, so at the end of the day, we'll see what we end up, but I've only been here a couple of years, but I can tell you that the department heads work really hard.
I know they do.
To maintain their budgets and, and to turn money back. And they're turning money back, I don't think was to build a surplus. It was, it was because they, it's the right thing to do. And whatever, if you're turning more money back, you use more money at the end of that year, a fund balance to offset your next year's budget. It doesn't need to build it and you don't need to, you don't need to overtax anyone to do it. You use more of it as, as it accrues than.
I understand that, but in the past, we haven't done that. We've left it in there.
Oh, I'm not suggesting that you should make a big pot of cash. Anyway.
I think everybody's tired. Chief?
Can I bring up one more thing?
No.
You know, Mr. Mike, monthly report that we still participate in the military surplus program?
Yes.
And we've got the three UTBs. We have an audit coming up and one of the things that I need to get on the record, if I can, is to, is to kind of refresh with the new council. When we started this program, I think it was back during Desert Storm, it was 27 years ago. So I just want to kind of refresh to make sure that all of the council is on board and knows what we're doing with that program. Because one of the checkpoints on the forms that I fill out for the stuff is that your local town council knows what you're doing is on board with it. So I just want to bring that up tonight to see if there are any questions and make sure everyone's on board because I just got a notice also that we're being audited, so they're going to be doing that within the next month or so.
We're on it. Nice job.
I don't have a problem with it. Our personnel carrier, if you have one of those.
And it was 27 years ago, just to know.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
We have motion second for German. All those in favor?
I'm tired.